Good evening. It's January 8th, 2024. Unbelievable. And that's our first school committee meeting of the year for Hatfield. I'm Kristy Boudreau, Chair, calling the meeting to order. And to start out, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone joining us online that would like to make a public comment? Okay. We appreciate folks joining us virtually. Thank you. Nice to see you both. And so we're going to move on to our mission moment. And I know I have one to finish mission moments, but before I get there, does anybody want to share a mission moment? These are sort of the things that speak to how our school district is bringing our plans to life. Principal Pedro.
We had a very successful winter concert. It was so great to see so many families and community members come out to support that event. And yeah, it was just great to have the kids participate.
Absolutely. It's fun.
I can highlight the Luminary concert similarly. It was just a great event to have the students play some music, some festive music, and cap off and sort of start the holiday season.
I've heard really good things about Smith Academy Band.
Yeah, it's coming along really nicely.
That's awesome.
In a large part, in big thanks to Leah Gardner, our band director.
It's hard to make those big transitions, so that's really exciting. I also wanted to take a minute in mission moment to recognize and thank Mr. Wood. I believe this is, unless barring something really unplanned, this is your last school committee meeting with Hatfield.
It is.
Your last school committee meeting?
Yes.
Potentially?
Hopefully.
And so to recognize and celebrate the occasion, we have cake.
Oh, thank you.
Because retirements are a joy. My understanding is retirements are a joyful thing, or at least I hope they will be. It's not really in the distance, but yours is right here.
I know.
Days away.
Days away.
So I'm hoping we can pass this down. And Molly and Melissa, do you think you guys could help?
Oh, yeah, sure.
With cake? So we're going to pass the cake and pass what you're going to need for cake.
Thank you so much. And thank you to the town of Hatfield and all of you. It's been a really joyful experience. Had a great time. I know it's time.
How many years in education total?
It's almost 40. I would have been 40 complete by the end of June.
There's a lot of years in service to kids.
There really is.
So we can't speak to 40 years of kids, but on behalf of them, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So does anybody not want cake? Okay, so there you go. We'll move on with the meeting, but the meeting will involve cake. That's just what I'm saying. On the consent agenda, I just want to pull out that there is an edited version of the minutes from December 12th. And so those you've seen by email, and it's in the folder. And so is there anything that anybody wants to pull off the consent agenda, knowing that it's the edited version of 12/11? And the minutes are 12/18 from our record-setting sixth-minute meeting with two votes. Clearly, you're the reason it takes so long.
I know. I've read those minutes.
Anything else? Okay. So the minutes are approved, and we'll move on. Is there a student representative report?
There is not a student representative.
Okay. So we get to jump right into juicy stuff. And there's a presentation tonight. Our deep dive, as folks that are playing along at home, is when we take one topic that's really meaningful to the district and jump. So before we go too far, John, can you confirm that anybody viewing at home can see the slides?
You see it on that little on the right table? They see it on the left.
Awesome sauce.
So we put this together based on the grants that we currently receive. We do receive quite a few. And the purpose of grants are really to supplement our programming, not supplant our ability to fund existing programs. In some cases, they're substantial. But for example, when you look at the 240 grant, we have a requirement that
Why do I not see that?
What don't you see?
I don't see that.
We have a requirement that we meet the expectation of funding special education to Hatfield Public Schools by Hatfield dollars. And as long as we do that, and they don't check every year, but they spot-check. So it's called maintenance of effort. And so they do monitor this type of activity to be sure that communities are not supplanting their program dollars with grants. The idea for many of these grants, whether they be federal or state, or even the elective grants that we apply for and do receive, they really are to either target specific initiatives that we are fortunate enough to feel we can have, or we are trying to support a particular initiative. And so tonight, we're going to start looking at our special education grants that Dr. Brenner has responsibility for, usually writing and certainly oversight.
Before you guys jump in, I just can tell that the folks at, at least the folks on Zoom, unless they're tuned in to, John, if they're tuned in to our YouTube streaming, will they see it there?
Yes, they will.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest to the folks who are on Zoom that they use the link on the agenda to go to the streaming YouTube, which is live. And that way, they'll be able to see it, because I don't think they can see it on the Zoom.
Oh.
Just for those folks. Because then, when we shut down the Zoom, that will go away. So just want to give them a second to acknowledge that they've Okay.
So it's on YouTube.
Yeah.
But it's not on Zoom.
Right.
So you have to share a screen on the Zoom if you want it to go on to the Zoom.
And I can do that, but as soon as I leave, as soon as I finish, it ends up shutting things down.
Yeah, so you tell me what you'd like to do.
We can share it offline with them as well, because we know who's there.
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure it's on his stuff.
Yeah, it's on my stuff.
Okay. That's probably most important.
It is. Thanks.
So I think I get to eat a po' can or sandwich of this grant presentation. So just to start us off, and I know the school committee is well aware in their professional and just existing as school committee, the process of grants, but just wanted to highlight the process for folks, because I do think that grants seem like an easy thing sometimes. And I just wanted to highlight the different aspects of getting grants, whether they're an entitlement, like an allocation where the state says, based on student population or whatnot, particularly for like special education, Title I, you get this amount, or whether we're going after competitive grants. This is a kind of similar process, no matter which direction. And you can see that it is quite involved for the various staff that take up these components. So the first piece is to research and find grants. So there are some that are annual grants that we know that are coming to us. But then there's some that are kind of regular, but at an odd interval. There's one this year, for instance, that I'll talk about in a little bit, in a little bit related to special education, that's available sometimes, but not always. Or researching the competitive grants and vetting out whether we qualify or are even in good running for such a grant. Then there's the step of gathering data, collecting reports, creating reports. Sometimes there's performative tasks, like self-assessments that are required, and analyzing those needs. And then when we complete the application, there's always several parts to the application. So there's the narrative, where we talk about what we want to do and what our needs may be related to that grant, and any data required, and then the budget proposal. And when we look at budgets, each of the grants that we'll talk about tonight, they have their own set of requirements. So you know, something as simple as transportation. Sometimes it's okay. A lot of the times, it's not, under our special ed transportation. Or even supplies. Some are covered, some are not. So I know for myself, for like the 240 grant, there's about a 30-page supplemental document of saying what can and cannot be used in that. So that budget proposal is pretty involved. And then we wait. And sometimes we know how long that is, and oftentimes we don't. For instance, I applied to a competitive grant in November. Hadn't heard back. I just reached out ahead of this meeting, and they said, oh, yep, we will be releasing that information the end of January. But there was never a notice of when that would happen. So the waiting game is tricky when you're trying to plan. And then if we do get that allocation, or we're awarded the competitive grant, there's a lot of work around making sure that the purchase orders are in, that things, if we need to contract with folks, order from different places, sharing the budget with Riley or the town, and monitoring that fund usage. So there's a lot of ongoing work in that way. And then oftentimes, with allocations or with awarded amounts, there's some kind of monitoring, or the need to audit at some point during it to show what we've spent our money on. And there might be a progress monitoring component. So that's just an overview of the grant process. And for those of you who participated in it, this is nothing new. But for those of you who are less familiar with the various grants, we just wanted to summarize that. And then Melissa will walk us through the next set.
So Title I is a federal grant. It's an allocation grant. So we find out over the summer what that amount is going to be. This number is contingent on a few factors, but mostly it's around the free and reduced lunch data. There's also a requirement that I need to contact any and all school choice or schools that we send students to other schools, private schools, to see if they are interested and/or want some of our Title I monies. They are absolutely by law allowed to have that. And then also for homeschools. Primarily, this is used for a reading interventionist salary, our required Title I reading night supplies, and for books. Do you want us to just go through all of them, and you'll ask questions as you go? Or do you want me to stop at each one?
Let's see if we can kind of get through a lot.
Sure, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
With you guys?
Yeah. Title II is another federal grant that, again, we are allocated money. This is between anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 we've gotten in the past. We use this money primarily to support and fund the mentor coordinators and our mentoring program. This is for supporting teachers who are getting mentors in both Year One and Year Two, or Tier One and Tier Two.
And that's required, by the way, by the state.
Our Title IV grant is, again, another federal grant. We are typically allocated around $10,000 a year for this grant. This is used primarily, again, for supporting safe and supporting healthy schools. We've used this money to purchase the Second Step curriculum and materials. Stipends for our resource officer are also used for this money, as well as the insurance for the comfort dogs.
So the next couple of grants I'll be talking about, and these are grants specific to Smith Academy. So the first grant, we're in the second year of this one, is the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant. And it's to look at school, ours is to look at school-wide, safe and supportive school environments. So last year, the grant involved, you know, using a, it's a department-made self-assessment tool. And so we use that tool to look at different areas where we might want to focus. Last year, that came out mid-year. So some of the areas we had been hoping to use the grant for were already kind of in the running. So it was kind of putting, we'd already started doing some of the stuff that we had anticipated needing it for. So it was nice to have that, to be able to kind of validate some of what we were doing, saying, yep, this works. This is what we should be doing, according to the self-assessment tool. And it also allowed us to kind of chart a path forward for what we would like to, what we'd like to do. So primarily, we're using it to help stipend advisory teachers for the advisory role, as well as to implement Second Step at the high school and middle school level, and to adapt Second Step to be relevant for high school students as well, which is a social-emotional curriculum. The PACE Grant is one that I wish I could take credit for, but I can't. I inherited this grant. This started under Principal Buckland a while back, and has been kind of the gift that keeps on giving. This was supposed to be a one-to-two-year grant to help support computer science literacy initiatives. And they keep just extending it. So we are now in Year Four of this two-year grant. And they've also increased what they give us. So it started at $10,000 per year, and now we're up to $15,000 per year. It's allowed us to really make strides in our computer science offerings. It's allowed us to train teachers across the board, including teachers who would like to integrate more computer science into their regulated curriculum. It's allowed us to purchase a lot of equipment. So there are times where, if you come visit Smith Academy, you have to dodge drones that have been coded to fly in the hallways from our students. We were able to purchase those. You were able to purchase two 3D printers. Recently, one of the 3D printers broke down, and the other 3D printer printed the part that was needed to fix the other 3D printer, which was pretty darn cool.
That's amazing.
And that was a student who had that idea and was able to do that, which is pretty neat. And so recently, we were, as a district and as a school, we were celebrated, Hatfield Public Schools was celebrated by the department for the number of students that participate in computer science. It's now a required part of our curriculum up through ninth grade. And then we have extensions beyond that, up through AP Computer Science. And we're looking to develop community partnerships for internships and work studies as well.
Want me to take this? So one of our most prolific grant writers is Jean Hobbie, who's our nurse leader. And she has partnered with John Hoppin, our Director of Student Nutrition Services. And so we have a, we've applied for a school nutrition equipment assistance grant. And we're just mentioning this, we did not get this particular grant. But it was a very intensive writing process that involved working with community, community members, farms, and so forth, as we did in the second grant as well. And so, you know, we look, and whenever something comes our way that we think connects ourselves to our mission and our district improvement plan or our school improvement plan, everybody gets on board to try to find what's out there. Mr. Hoppin has been successful in writing some grants as well for the food service program. And this year, he was, he applied for and was awarded 1789, just recently. And we were just notified so that we can purchase items such as potatoes and local dairy.
Had to be potatoes.
Had to be potatoes. But, you know, we're very big in looking at how to move farm to school. And we have the garden at HES, and that's something we would love to expand to SA. And should the resources become available, I'm sure Mr. Hoppin will be interested in doing that. We applied for a fairly large grant for, called the Action for Healthy Kids. And again, this was a pretty, pretty big opportunity to work with community members, area farms, and so forth. And so we were not funded. But one of the things that this writing process does is it gives us a bank of a written grant that we can then draw on should another grant come available. And it shortens the writing process. So that's something that we're certainly taking advantage of, is the time is invested in these grants that we don't receive. One of the ones that Jean has been very active on, and been really, I think, in terms of some of our school initiatives around healthy students, is looking at the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. Some of this is directly written for and embedded, but some of it is money that they have just consistently increased the grant, especially after COVID, because of looking at how to proactively get students engaged and accelerated learning through mental health and student health. So we have consistently been increasing the grant awards through this grant. And they have funded a wide range of health-related opportunities, including staff for mental health services within the school, to work with classroom teachers, the mental health liaison, looking at community resources, developing stuff that was started during COVID and was continued on by this person. And most recently, we've needed to replace our AEDs at Smith Academy, and this fell under the grant to be able to do that. So Jean is very actively always making herself available to write these kinds of grants.
Automated external defibrillator.
Thank you.
I knew the defibrillator part.
The zapper.
The zapper. And so, you know, just to emphasize that these are the sort of combined school health grants, the CSHS, and then the school-based health grants that have come into play here. So there are two kind of combined. Most of it is, the second part especially, is federal money that the state received that was non-ARPA. And so we hope that that will continue for at least a brief time so that we can continue those, the initiatives that we started. There's been the Scarlet Sock Foundation, which has a nice connection to local community. And then the Community Foundation with Western Mass was also something that we've worked with in the past, again, to fund the AEDs and the training that was provided for staff. And now the sandwich ends.
The sandwich ends. So we always, the two consistent ones are the 240 and the 262 grant. So the 240 is the big IDEA grant. So this is the biggest grant that I help manage. So this is about $100,000 every year. And Michael already discussed, we don't get this money unless we are making sure that we spend enough local funds to educate students with disabilities. So there's quite a process in the application process to make sure that our budget is correct from the get-go, so that these funds can be released to us. And then it's also important to note that it used to be called equitable share. Now it's proportionate share. But where we need to set aside funds from that amount for any student who's a homeschooled student who requires special ed services, and that may be in a drop-in way, it's something that we conference with those homeschool families. So they may come in for speech services, but the rest of their programming is a homeschool service, or any number of other programs. So we need to set aside some funding related to students who are homeschooled or who are Hatfield residents but attend a private school. And the reason I want to kind of highlight that is because it is a set aside from that amount. And we talk about our enrollment and making sure that we're looking at keeping our Hatfield students enrolled. And that's really important related to this funding, because it is a set aside. The other piece of that is proportionate share funding is quite complicated when it comes down to private schools, in that the federal guidelines versus the state guidelines are not quite sunk up related to the location of the school. So for instance, Bea Mint is in Deerfield. But if we have a Hatfield student that goes there, we are required to provide the special ed services that they need. But Deerfield also is supposed to help fund some of those services there. But the way, the set aside isn't an amount that makes any sense, if that makes sense. So we still need to provide that service, no matter what that cost is. But the set aside is something within their algorithm. So it often goes beyond that set aside. But anyways, when I talk about how grants can be complicated, that's a highlight there. So we use this for partial salaries, supplies, and professional development primarily. And an example of that is, so it's really tricky to have certain folks on staff, like a physical therapist. And we know that we likely, given our population, won't need more than a day a week. But on any given year, it might flex how much of that day is on a grid service versus what can be used to support inclusion in PE or inclusion at recess. And so making sure that we offset that portion using this grant is an example of how that partial salary might be covered. The 262 grant is for our little people. So we get very little. At one point in time, preschool was very heavily grant-funded. It has all but disappeared. So we get 1,200 to 1,800, and we pretty much use that for updated supplies, curriculum, those kind of things. The 274 grant, this is one of those that is not available every year. So this is essentially a grant where the state wants to target a professional development activity for special education, and they release it. So it hasn't been available in several years. And it is available, and we received it this year related to the new IEP that's coming. And then, you know, but during COVID, we had supplements to the 240 and 262. There was ARPA grants for both of those. So there is a flux to some of the special ed grants. And then just some other efforts that myself, or Melissa, or Connor have looked into. I've applied for two social-emotional-related grants. One was last summer, which we did not receive. They re-released it with some new guidelines, and that's the one I applied for in November. And we'll find out at the end of this month whether we received it. We've had technology grants that Paul DeValle had done, and Suzer has looked into. We've applied for a literacy grant. We also review various corporate and nonprofit grant resources regularly. And some of those are things like Connor getting fly fishing gear. So, you know, large and small, we do go after what makes sense to go after. But it also is a lot to navigate and manage at the same time.
I have one.
I have a few. Go ahead. Molly, regarding the 240 grant?
Mm-hmm.
The set aside money?
Mm-hmm.
Is there ever a time where the set aside money isn't all used? And if so, what would have happened to it?
Never. But if there was, a scenario would be, particularly in this district, is if we only had one or two students, and they moved, you know, and what was planned wasn't there. We do have to report that. We do have to report that if it wasn't used. And after a certain period of time, it can be used for other efforts. But-
I was thinking kind of like somebody homeschooled, and the family is choosing not to receive any services or something to that effect of-
So this is part of what I do in the summer is have those conferences. So we have the, and throughout the year, leading, you know, like during this year, we, you know, we have team meetings if they're an established student. But if there's a new student or we sorted out, we have these conferences of this amount of money. And there really isn't, they give us an allocation. They say, you know, of this amount of money, you have this amount of students, you need to use this of your 240. It's then up to the discretion of the district with partnership of parents, how that's divvied up. Because sometimes things, you know, so say, like a drop-in speech service. Well, I don't really need to set aside, like identify a certain amount of money for our speech pathologist. She's there. She's already fully staffed. She, you know, maybe adding somebody to a group or something like that. But somebody traveling out or a tutor, or you also can buy supplies using that money. So there was an autism curriculum that a family wanted a couple of years ago. That's some of the money we used, or a portion of some of our contract consultation providers who will consult just to the parents. That's another way we use it. So we, it all gets used and often, not, I mean, every year that, I mean, here and most everywhere else, we still have that obligation for FAPE. So we go beyond that. But I don't know if that helps. It's kind of a monkey area.
You're saying it's more flexible, that it's not per student or-
No, yeah, it is more flexible, and so, and it gets used up. And no matter in the end run, we have to, we need to provide the service anyway. So.
Thank you. Any questions?
If we don't win the grant, do they ever, do they give an explanation as to why? And if so, do we ever look back at it as like, oh, this was a missed opportunity? If only we had done the application somewhat differently, then we would have been awarded it? Or was it, does it usually just seem like, oh, okay, we weren't the right fit for that grant?
It depends on the grant. One thing that you can do is if a grant is not awarded to you, and you thought you were, you know, you thought you were a strong candidate for it, you, you know, you can reach out to other districts. You can find out who received the grant and then find, you know, see what they were able to submit, to get some information and get a little comparison there. But some grants, they just say no.
And we're in a, you know, a lot of the grants are really targeted for underperforming districts. That's not us. A lot of grants are targeted for more populous or more percentage of ELL students or like other things that just aren't us. So sometimes we can't apply for them at all. And other times, it sort of says like, this is who we're trying for, but everybody's welcome to apply. And we do try to go for those, but we recognize it's pretty, kind of going into it often, we'll recognize that it's pretty low probability. But we try and make sure to highlight how we align with what they're looking for.
So if my quick math is right, and Superintendent would double-check me here, we're talking about grants for fiscal year '24, we're less than 3% of our total budget.
Right.
So just to put that into perspective, this is a very small, to the early point, which is this is supplemental. This isn't covering major programs, so, or fully funding stuff. So it looks like this year, we budgeted for around $195,000 in grants.
Total.
And some years, we budget, and it doesn't come in, is my memory as well. So we had a Title I year where we expected, and it was like, oh, it didn't, it just, yeah, Connor remembers vividly, it was less than half. I think you write the Title I grant. So you guys hear it. You do now. Nice pass. Yeah. So a couple other quick questions. Who's tracking compliance? How does that work?
It really depends on the grant, but the grant author is required to, it's on the hook.
And there are requirements at the end of the year that we have to make sure that the money has been spent, that there's tracking on all of that, because most of those grants, particularly at least the Title I, Title II, those have to be spent by June 30th.
Are we seeing challenges in meeting the performance measures as we go back and do that?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
No.
Like, what do you, I like the idea of following up when you can, because sometimes you really learn something valuable. Is there a way that we're capturing that in a way that other people who write the grants hear about it too? So if something doesn't, if one of Jean's grants doesn't come through, does Molly hear about that? Just because sometimes those learnings apply to other things on occasion. Sometimes they won't.
Right. So with John and Jean's, I often partner with Jean, and Michael usually partners with John. We kind of divide and conquer that way in some ways because we're in, you know, sort of operations and then like health and mental health world. So, and, I mean, Jean is wonderful at going for these grants. But at the same time, this is part of the COVID funding wave, which has been beneficial. So DPH was flooded with funds federally related to COVID, and they've, you know, reallocated down to local level. You know, we had ESAR funding throughout COVID. That disappeared. This DPH funding has increased. We don't know how long that'll last.
Anything else while we're on grants?
I'm wondering roughly what percentage of the grants renew annually? Like, it looks through reading through these where some of them are like you can apply every year or like roughly, like a percentage of-
So if I understand the question. So things like the special ed grants, they are usually always available. It's just the amounts that change. And the entitlement grants are always annual. Again, the percent, the amounts of funds change.
Change drastically near the year.
You know, and a lot of the other grants, the smaller grants, the competitive ones, they're usually they're like two-year grants at a minimum because they'll do kind of a, like a kickoff year or self-study year, followed by an implementation year. So typically, not typically, but a lot of times you'll see they're two- or three-year grants, which is nice because if you get it for one year, then you're kind of guaranteed it for a couple more years. So you can sort of, if it's created a new program, you can start to budget for that and then kind of wean off of it a little bit.
And for the special ed grants in the spring, they, I think Michael refers to it lovingly as potluck money. But there's, when the state does their figuring, sometimes they'll find additional monies or something that wasn't used, and they'll do a reallocation. And I always go after it. It was one, I remember it was one of the ARPA ones. I think I got 24 cents, but I filled out the paperwork. But when that comes in the spring. So it's usually not much. On the 240, it might be like 200 bucks. And the 262, like, you know, 10 to $20 here. And then when we had the ARPA funny, funding, those were correlated but a little bit less. So that was even less. So whenever it comes up that we can get more within our grants, we always go after that as well.
Title I will do that, but Title II and Title IV do not.
Okay. I remember, I think it was last year, but there was a reading grant, and we didn't have the curriculum in place in order to be eligible. So that's kind of my question. If we get the feedback one year on a count, like, oh, you don't qualify, here's why. That feedback is then, like, how often do we, are we then kind of like getting a second shot at it?
Right. Yeah. So like, when we applied, we applied two years ago now for the math materials. But the main reason why we did not get it is because we had not put in for and purchased our math materials before we applied for the grant. We did it almost literally a week later. So that was a piece of the puzzle. And they already had enough grants ahead of us that they had already done that.
So it's usually kind of a one-and-done?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, because they did math one year, and then they did literacy last year.
But we do store all that, like what Michael said, like, we store all this information. So, and I know that sounds funny about if we didn't get the grant, why would we reuse that information for a new grant? But the grants are each slightly different. So if I have pulled a certain, you know, data or report for one grant and articulated that need, we still have that need potentially. And so we're able to kind of rework it. So all of us share. I mean, we all have folders of, you know, information for grants. So it's productive to apply in that sense. And it helps just, it's another mechanism to review our practice and think budget forward and those kind of things.
Anything else before we? So I'm going to go on to administrative reports. In the interest of, we have an executive session this evening that might take us some time. I just want to ask the committee, are you familiar with what's in the executive reports? Is there anything you want to pull out and ask some questions on?
I just wanted a question, a little clarification around the personnel update.
So why don't we speak specifically to the personnel update?
Specifically to that, because between the different reports, I got confused in the sum of the picture.
Yeah. Mr. Wood, can you just give us an overview of personnel and where things are?
Sure. So we, I think, I think, because this happens like very quickly.
I think, I think there was new developing information.
Yeah, I think these are updated between reports.
So at our December meeting, I think I said we were 100% staffed. And then one of the ESP candidates that we had offered a job to toward the job at HES ultimately decided not to take it. So that person did not take that job. And then during that period of time, between the last meeting and this meeting, our assistant for special services put in her resignation to take another, a similar position for the full school year in another district. So Dr. Brenner very actively posted and filled that position. Although, again, I will caution the words because the person hasn't signed on the dotted line yet.
Start date doesn't happen.
Start date has not happened. So were those the specific questions that you had?
So it's like the student services position was open, and we are-
We have a candidate, a very qualified candidate.
ESP, we still have one open position.
We do have one more open position. However, Dr. Brenner has worked a couple of different scenarios that we're not, we're going to fill it, but through contracted services with a different position. I think a couple of meetings ago, we talked to you about an RBT position. And so those services are going to kind of fill in based on what the IEP requires.
Okay. And then at the high school, there was an ESP position that was filled. We're good at the high school. We're good.
We're good at the high school, and we also have filled the vacancy left by Jason Duncan as he's moved into the Dean of Student Support position.
Got it. Okay.
99%. Let's be careful. Right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we still need a van driver.
We still do.
We still do.
Always. Always.
Please.
We did repost and was in touch with some applicants that, you know, want, would have needed us to provide the training, and we even looked to offer that, and then it didn't move forward. So, yes, always. Thank you.
It is a moving target.
Yeah. I could tell. I was like, I think these reports were all written at different times. So we just know where we're at right now.
Anything else? Jen, you have a look.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is there an enrollment update at all?
There is, at the bottom of the personnel report, that tab.
And I think that's also going to come up in the school finance.
Right.
So can we pause that? Because there's conversation there. Okay. So with that, I'm going to move on to item number eight, that there's an opportunity for co-op baseball and softball, which I believe will require a vote. Can you give us some overview of that?
Yeah. So the idea is that we would host the teams. So we would continue to have our baseball and softball teams. And it would also give the opportunity to students at the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School to join our teams as part of the co-op. One of the things that we have found over the last several years is that the numbers for baseball and softball, they aren't quite as strong as the numbers for fall sports or for basketball. Additionally, you know, especially in baseball, you have things like pitch count mandates that you can't go over. So you need a certain number of, you need a certain number of players to field a team. So that's our hope is that in addition to growing enrollment and having more of our own students play, that we can, we can give other students the opportunity and also benefit our school by having more students play and possibly more teams.
Just to clarify with the co-ops, the students attending PVCIS would arrange their own transportation and everything? They just come here, they just participate?
Yep. Yep, they participate. They would pay the user's fee to our school to be part of the team. There would never be an instance where a Smith Academy player didn't make a team or have an opportunity to play because students from another team were playing.
Is there a lot of interest from the other school?
I believe there is. Yeah, there is. They're in a position where they can't field a team, from my understanding. But they have students who are interested in playing, would like to play.
Which is us and other sports, right? So-
Totally. We love a co-op.
We have several of our students wrestling right now.
Wrestling, hockey, football.
Yep.
Wrestling?
Yeah, we have, some of our students are doing wrestling this year with Mount Hampton High School.
No kidding?
Yep.
So with that, is there a motion to approve a co-op with the Chinese immersion school for baseball and softball for this year?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the co-op?
Aye.
Any opposed? Co-op is approved. So moving ever forward here, we are at one of our favorite times of the year, calendar approval season. And so the calendar came to us. We took a look at it. There was much discussion. And so you're seeing draft three in front of you this evening that has a few tweaks that are, I think, mindful of they're parent-friendly in some of the changes, as well as, this is a direct reflection of a conversation with staff as well. And so I think if you'll remember back to some of Kathy's questions about where the half-days went. And so we're really looking at early release, particular around curriculum development days, and some of those getting slotted so that if you were going to be taking a holiday day off or a long weekend, that we might put some of that together for families. Also, if you're looking for childcare, that that gets to be like one grouping as opposed to really random days. And looking at just sort of how often we were out by month. So those are the changes. Dr. Driscoll has also kindly added things like the start time and the early dismissal times, which may seem small, but is like, oh.
No, it's not small.
It's not small.
Thank you for that.
It was the first thing I saw. I was like, glorious.
On behalf of about 300 families, we would like to say thank you. So you'll see early release days in yellow, no school days in red. And we're working on getting some key, not all, but key community event days, which will show up in green. So the open house for the, at the start of the year for both schools is there. And our goal is to also have the winter concerts and art show in December that will be reflected. I think we can vote through, like, that's not something the school committee will control. So we're leaving a place on it to say we'd like to see it on there, but we're not, we're not choosing the date of that. not choosing the date of that, those two events. Just asking that administration get it listed.
Yep.
Which I think families will be really appreciative of because they can schedule ahead.
And I'm really glad that we had that input from staff. I think that really helped shape this.
So are there questions?
Just one question. Was there a particular reason we did two half-days in a row in May? It was just that May 16th one, I didn't know if there was a particular reason we chose that.
We moved one that was in April into May so that we didn't have it.
I remember now. Promise. Now I remember. I was like, I know there was something.
And then the 23rd then ties into Memorial Day.
Which is perfect. Nope, we love it.
And in terms of continuity, that, having two back-to-back seems a little unorthodox, but it will provide an opportunity for, if we have something that's, that started on that, that first day, a chance to maybe implement a little bit, reflect, and then finish it up on that second day, rather than having a long time between the two.
Love to hear it. And also like the formatting was a little funny. So I was like, did we move this one? I didn't remember. My other question, and again, this is like not relevant to a date that the school committee sets, but I did notice, and I might be misreading, that I think we have the HES grades closing on here, but not Smith Academy's.
Oh.
So it would be nice to just have both.
That can be done.
Not a deal breaker, but this would be nice.
Do you like a motion? Or are we still discussing? I'm just making sure everybody's, like, this can sometimes be a thing. So I'm just making sure that we've all thought it through and had a chance. It, it's comparable to the half-day schedule in general that we see year in, year out. And it now concludes the end of the year on a Friday. So there's not a little carryover.
As long as it doesn't snow.
Provided it doesn't, right. Depending on the snow day schedule, however.
We're controlling what we can control.
Indeed.
We'll get one snow day.
Oh, Monday. Okay. Are folks ready to take a vote on this?
Here's just one quick question.
Of course.
Refresh me again, what is the reason why pre-K and K start two days after?
The pre, the kindergarten and preschool have orientation, like they invite families in to see the classroom.
Okay.
And for kindergarten, they, we actually do en masse assessments. So parents sign up for a half-an-hour block of time. And we have the OT, the speech teacher, there's different assessments that are conducted during those two first days.
You're talking about August 29th and 30th?
Yep.
Should we consider putting that on there then, so families know that they still have something?
Well, there's the first day listed, and then they get communication specifically. So you want to see a pre-K, K eval days?
Or just like orientation days? Because this is, otherwise, I would be on vacation.
Yeah, that's fine.
Until Labor Day. Yeah.
Yep, that makes sense. Are you editing that now or not?
Yeah, we're just in orientation days or something.
We can do, just put that below.
It's August 29th and 30th, it's pre-K, K orientation.
But families get calls in the summer and they only, they sign up for a half-an-hour.
Yes, they do.
So it's not like they need to be available both days.
No.
But they need to be.
It needs to be blocked.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I just, I don't want them to think it's like a full-day thing.
Full-day thing, right, gotcha.
It's the same with the parent-teacher conferences. It's blocked for the afternoon, but they're only getting a 10 or 15-minute window.
Right, yeah.
I just know myself.
We verified the holidays.
Yes.
We double-checked the days on learning.
I mean, I think this looks great. Honestly, it's improved by a lot. I'm, I'm ready to move on it. I think the only other thing I would say, because I know, this is like a formatting thing, when we send it out to families, I would just delete the little notations of the days.
We will delete all that, yeah.
You know, with the draft?
Can I ask, what notation did you cut out?
The number of days.
Just the number of days.
Yeah. I know, we, we put them in to work with ourselves, but in other years, they were not removed. So I would just say, sure.
Agreed, they need to cut, need to cut out.
Yeah, because I think it's, it looks really nice.
Anything else before we take a vote? Because when we make changes, we have to bring it back for a vote, so. Okay. I'll take a motion, if someone has one.
Make a motion to approve the proposed school year 24-25 calendar as presented.
Second?
Okay. All in favor of the calendar presented, including the one update we discussed about orientation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Driscoll, for pitching on that, too. And honestly, thank you to the HTA, who was, was a good, good partner on that. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Sullivan for the school finance committee update.
Okay. So a fairly brief update. We met last week and we discussed transfers at first, and we'll have a vote tonight to cover some of these transfers. Just reflecting that we have some funds that we, some grant funds that we had allocated for special ed transport, which cannot be used as such. So we're going to move the money out of that account to the special ed salaries and then move some town money from salaries back into transport. So it should be an even swap. There, just a heads up, there'll be transfers at future meetings just for some other special ed transport costs and some out-of-district costs. That, sorry, some special ed transport costs, but we won't need any out-of-district tuition costs because of Molly's hard work on getting our circuit breaker funds up. And also a pending appeal on some of the billing for those funds to a different district. Enrollment, it looks like we are up eight since our October enrollment update across several different grades. So that's a good sign for us. And if either the principals or Mr. Wood have anything further on that, or?
I believe we even have two more that might not be in that report.
Yeah. I thought we had someone come in last week that couldn't get counted into that. So that may be up to 10.
Yes.
It might be.
And if I read that correctly, since October, the, any shift going the other way was the sum total of one pre-K kid.
Since October, yes.
So we've, we've gained 10 since October, we've lost one.
It's been a combination of move-ins and the choice.
Right, which is great.
Which is great, it's good to see.
So campaign 2040 is working.
We have, on that note, we have, the Smith Academy's spring school choice open house scheduled, similar to last year, it'll be, it'll be student-led tours. That's going to be on February 29th.
Slap.
Yeah.
I was also really excited to see that some of the eighth graders have chosen their civic project to look at school enrollment. And so our students are getting engaged, which is awesome. They have lots of questions, which I'm excited about, so they're paying attention.
I'm also excited that my mom had recently moved and sold our family house, and there's a new family there with two kids to enjoy the massive yard that, you know, was just being mowed for the last several years, so.
Is that a requirement, that you had to have school-aged kids by your own time?
Yes.
Thank you for doing what you can for the cause.
Screening all the people at the open house, like, nope, nope.
Jen, do you have other questions that are specific to enrollment? Because this would be a good time to talk about them.
No, I don't think so. So you're saying that that final number that you just gave, the gain 10, lost one, is the current update? Or there may be another one that you said is not represented here?
I think the 10 is.
The 10 is inclusive of.
Inclusive of the two new ones.
The two that started like late last week. Third grade's done very well, I'm very proud.
I know, third grade. I just was wondering if we had any follow-up about school, any additional school choice inquiries or anything else? I know we had, there were some things, sort of, like the school break and stuff, I just didn't know how the follow-up was.
Yeah, we've had a couple, certainly we've had a progression of school choice, obviously, since that. But even in the last week, I believe we have, we have somebody's coming to for a tour.
I have two tours this week.
Yeah.
Awesome.
We had a shadow this week.
Yep, we had a shadow.
Great.
So they're trickling in, which is great.
Okay.
And of course, this is the end of the first semester, second quarter.
This is like when people are looking at things, so.
People, you know, will be looking, so.
Great. Hoping we're following up.
Yep.
That'd be great. Sorry, Adam.
That's okay. We had a discussion about how much money Haffield could realize in savings with our combined, with our administrative changes going forward with Mr. Wood's retirement and hopefully Dr. Driscoll coming in as a super principal and.
That's our official name title, by the way. I think we're sticking to that.
Other administrative changes. So the number there might not actually be quite what it was, it may have been rounded down a little bit more, but we're still looking at hopefully some significant savings with the combined super principal contract, the dean of student services, and the replacement for the, for the new dean's former position. And question of, if there are remaining funds, do the remaining school committee members have any direction as to what to do with those funds?
So we've been having a conversation that because of this specific change, one, there was, there's been some unfilled stuff that, I mean, we campaigned so that we could grow some, and seed in new courses. And that came to fruition in many cases. And in the case of like Spanish at the elementary school, it didn't because we couldn't, we just couldn't fill it. Those funds then are available and have helped us out in a few occasions so that we didn't have to go hand out, back to town, and ask for help. So some of that is still sort of playing out where we will end this year. But in particular, with the change we're looking at with Mr. Wood's retirement and that change, because we're combining those roles, there's likely to be some funds. It's, and I think one of the things that, as we look at it, is how do we want to move forward with that? Because at the moment, there are $0 carrying forward in school choice monies. Where typically, we have had, not the sort of mythicalized millions that some people think we might have had, that was never the case. But we have often had some reserves in our school choice budget that is carried forward and rolls over. We have an opportunity that things could shift back. We have an opportunity to end the year with some money left over that then would revert to town. If it reverts to town, it's, it's out of our budget and control at that point. So I think the finance team is saying, would like the full committee to be thinking about how we, it's not a decision we have to make tonight, but it is a decision we need to be thinking about if we're able to have some savings. And I mean, we've, we've worked to have some savings, right? But also, there's an opportunity right now, we have some changes coming with next year. There could be things like professional development, that this might afford something special to help us be better prepared for next year. It could roll into school choice, it could roll over and help fund incidentals in the future, or it could go back. I mean, those are sort of the broad paths. And I, and I think we're mindful that we asked for a lot, and I think that cuts both ways, right? So.
And I think, not to put them on the spot right now, but I would be interested to know where administration thinks that that money would have the best impact on student performance, student achievement.
So we will ask for that to get responded to next meeting.
Okay.
Just a little bit more, the pre-K before and after care, the application has been open for the position as of yet, or as of a meeting last week, there were no applicants. I assume that hasn't changed. We had asked to maybe reach out to Ms. Benson, Ms. Patty, and see if she had any direction for someone who might be interested in that.
Yep. I have reached out and she is looking to see recent grads from the program. She, she runs a program in East Hampton. It's called the Tiny Tots Program. I know it because my daughter goes to it. But basically, there are high school students who are in the, you know, they're, they're the teachers under Ms. Benson's supervision, who work really well with, with the students. And the thought is if there are recent graduates who are, have been interested in pursuing that line of work, that they might be interested in this kind of position. So she's agreed to look into that and see if anyone comes to mind and put them in touch with us.
We're trying, I say we, they're, they're trying to get this in place ahead of time just because we know that, you know, parents who are going to be applying for preschool, this could be, you know, it's the one way or the other depending upon if this program exists, or you have to seek a different plan, whether it be daycare or a different preschool that has extended day services. So we'd like to be able to provide this within time, if possible. So stay tuned, hopefully we get something out of it. The next word Brenner was just kind of, it ties back into savings from administrative changes. We also had the savings that we discussed from school psychologists and the Spanish teacher. So really nothing extra there, just what do we want to do with those funds? And then we're meeting at the end of the month to discuss FY '25, and we'll have an update for you at the next meeting for that.
So budget season is, is here.
It is.
Always here.
Town finance is calling. Doesn't seem to stop.
No.
No. I would emotionally prepare yourselves for more budget conversations next month that will probably require a deeper dive on the committee's part. And I don't believe that there is a policy subcommittee report, and so we're going to move on to transfers.
Yes, so the, the transfers document is in your folder. I did one, so originally I did an edit for transfer number one, but then I added a couple from our meeting that we had the other day. If you don't want to approve those, because you didn't have a chance to look at those, that's fine, we can do them at, you can do them at the next meeting. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get.
So the one link that.
Yeah, not the link, the other file.
There's another one.
There's another one that just.
Sorry.
Because it was a, why is it not going all the way down to get there? Because it's, the issue is that we had $50,000 that I had put in transportation that was coming out of the 260 grant. We can't take that money out of the 260 grant, so we've got, and the grant was not written that way to do that. So we want to move 50,000 out of secondary teacher salaries and move that to transportation and move the 50,000 that's on our budget document to teacher salaries. So that it'll balance on our document. The grant was already written as, as teacher salaries, so that doesn't have to be changed.
This is from the 240 grant?
Yes.
And so you see 50 on there twice, but it's, it's a $150,000 change. It has to kind of go a couple different places. And then the BCBA is just because we had, we had that as a staff position and we're having to support it with outside services.
Correct, we're going to make that into contracted services.
And then the sped driver, same thing.
Same type of thing.
So it's just where we can get the, the work done. So the, it's just changing, it has to change line items.
Makes sense.
Those lines aren't overspent now, this is a sort of a proactive transfer.
So in school finance, we're working to see how much we can get ahead of the transfers so that it's not all at the back end of the year, so that we can just have a better eye to make sure we don't inadvertently overspend anything. So.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the transfers that we've spoken to and presented? Aye. Any opposed? Approved. Okay. So with that, the committee is going to go into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with. We do plan to return to open session, so that we can, in anticipation that we may have some votes, and if that looks like it is going to change, we will, we will speak up. But I'm pretty sure we will be back relatively quickly. I would like to actually start this conversation related to the super principal contract, and so that will be just the committee, and then Dr. Driscoll will join us to talk about the MOUs. So.
That's your motion?
That is in fact my motion.
Then I will second your motion.
Excellent. All in favor?
We have to roll call.
We have to roll call because of that. So roll call vote, Boudreaux, aye?
Inglehart, aye.
Bench, aye.
Maloney, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Great, thank you. So we're back, so exciting. So, we're returning to open session after an executive session to talk about memo of understanding between the Hatfield School Committee and the Hatfield Teaching Association. We have a number of those to take a look at. The first one up is related to additional days for the dean of student support role. Sorry, committee, I'm doing this by the, to order is a little bit different than your paperwork. This basically allows for that dean of student support role will have an additional five workdays for contracted year. Does the committee have any concerns? Can we take these with one motion? Okay, so that's one. The next one up is related to the sick leave bank, and so, that is sort of a twofold item. There are two collective bargaining agreements, one for the teachers, one for our educational support professionals, each of which speaks to a sick leave bank and a sick leave bank committee. And so this MOU clarifies that there will be one joint sick leave bank that is shared between teachers and ESPs, and that the committee that would review requests for use of time out of that bank will be comprised of a teacher representative, an ESP representative, and one school committee representative, and the decision of those will be final. The next MOU is related to an athletic director, so the existing contract states that an athletic director, historically a teacher, will not have additional duties, because that, that job function takes you away from so much time, and so this allows for when that, when that stipend is held by a staff member who is not a classroom teacher, that they will be able to have other duties, and that's going to be relevant for us.
Can we just clarify for anybody watching what duties are, such as...
Sure. Can you and...
Could be, you know, maybe coverage for a class, could be detention duty is a typical one, hallway patrol duty kind of, kind of thing, so, so, things that we would typically ask teachers to do with their, their duty period in the contract, because of the, the kind of demands on the athletic director that needed often timely and prompt detention. During the last negotiation, it was decided to stipulate that they would not have additional duties.
So, given that that is now likely to be filled by someone who's not having those typical teacher duties, we're looking for that to change. And then the last MOU is related to the grievance process, when we specifically have a dual-rolled administrator, so when we have a super principal, that the grievance process that would start typically with a principal, and then if unresolved, would move on to a level with the superintendent, but in those cases, if it was in a building where the principal served both roles as superintendent and principal, it would skip the superintendent's step, because that would already have been heard, and move on to what is level three, which would include the school committee. So it keeps the timeline of the grievance process the same, it just shortens that level. So, having reviewed these MOUs, school committee, is there a motion to accept...
I will make a motion to accept the four MOUs as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we need a roll call vote for this one, Kathy? It's our historical memory? I think we do, but I'm not sure that we do.
No, because we're in open session, we're not in...
It's just going into closed. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's a 4-0 vote. Our last piece of business before we adjourn is like the happiest part of the night in my book, and that is the finalization of our superintendent-principal contract. So, we've previously voted to make you an offer, we are excited that you have accepted the offer.
Said to accept.
And we have concluded the, the deal terms for the contract. So I believe we just want to make a motion to make that contract formal.
I will make a motion to approve and accept the contract with Dr. Connor Driscoll as our superintendent-principal.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would like, for the record, to include Mr. Sullivan's aye vote in a stitche. So, with that, happy news, is there a motion to adjourn for the evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.